The 12th and 17th of July, 2017, the 17th of October, the 18th of November. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the Act. Proper notice of this meeting was provided in a notice, April 26, 2017. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Sun, Star Letter, New Jersey Herald News, and the Nutley Journal. Mailed to the Nutley Town Attorney, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. My excellent presence.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Mr. Boozin?
Mr. Valzama?
Here.
Mr. Stachekinmore?
Here.
Mr. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Bollheim?
Here.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Here.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Calera?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Cornisell?
Here.
We have approval of minutes, please.
I make the motion.
Set up.
All in favor?
One of us made it, one of us seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have any correspondence today?
I've done this evening.
All right, we're going to start off with our academic data presentation. It's going to be provided by our Directors of Curriculum, Mr. Kent Vania and Mrs. Janine Locensolo.
Good evening, everyone. Board, thank you for giving us a brief opportunity to share with you some of our data from this past year and say hi to all the academic teachers, great turnout. Thanks for coming in, I really appreciate it. And everybody else. We're going to briefly go through our data from 2016-17. This data's been coming in, it's been ongoing coming in. And we want to say now and at the end of our presentation that data, individual student data will be going home tomorrow, and it should be at each student's house by the end of the week, by Thursday, I believe, through the mail. So you can find out your individual son or daughter's data and information on how to read that data coming home by the end of the week. So we would first like to start by just pointing out that in our processes that we build for our strategic plan, we have a continuous improvement cycle. We are constantly looking at data, at different indicators, internal, external. This is one piece of a multiple measure puzzle, at teacher forums, student forums, and trying to get information to make us better. Right now, we are getting some key metrics from the state. We're reporting them to you. You will be analyzing, understanding them, continuing that process we started in the district. We're opening this up even more at our Professional Learning Day next Tuesday, and we're going to keep getting input as to areas of focus and how to improve, plans to improve those areas of focus. So this nice presentation comes to us with some PARC data, SAT, ACT, ACT, BCT, AP data. As significant data sets, we also look at school attendance data, internal common assessment measurements, and different types of feedback from teachers, students, and parents. Janine's going to speak.
So really, at the heart of any assessment, especially in regards to PARC, is really, really rigorous teaching and learning. We wanted to just take a minute to reference the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. They were adopted in 2013, and they replaced the Common Core State Standards, which PARC is still aligned to. And they were really meant to clarify the standards a bit further for teachers and students. Before we get into specific PARC data, I just wanted to review with you the performance levels. PARC data is broken into four levels of performance, with a level one on our charts indicated in red, which means a percentage of students who did not meet expectations. Orange would be a level two for students who partially met expectations. A level three would be a yellow, approaching expectations. A green would be meeting expectations. And a blue, level five, would be exceeding expectations. So just to give you an overview of the way the data's going to be presented in the next few slides, you'll see on the bottom here, we have some subgroups. It always starts on the left with PARC. I know the writing is a little bit small, so if you can't see it. Next to it, you'll see the state totals next to that Nutley. And then the five columns to the right are the individual elementary schools. So you'll see from here, we're going to start with English Language Arts. This is grade three. And we have students performing, more students exceeding expectations, which would be in the blue at the top there than we have in previous years, with a slight decrease in meeting expectations there in the green. This is consistent. If you actually look across, you'll see a decrease here in New Jersey approaching, and you'll see that we're actually doing the opposite there as well. Here in grade four, if you look at Nutley specifically, last year, we had a significant increase in students meeting standards, and we were able to maintain that this year. So if you look at the bottom here in 15, 16, we had a large increase in students meeting standards and also exceeding standards at the top there. And then this year, we were able to build on that and have more students exceeding standards and maintain that same degree of meeting standards as well. If you look at the bottom, in the red where you see students who did not meet standards, this is significant as well, because you'll see PARC overall, we saw an increase, actually, across the PARC seven states in students who were not able to meet standards. But in Nutley, you'll see we continue to decrease even as the state is maintaining. So we're actually doing a better job at addressing those students who are on the lower end there. So before I go on to the cohort study, I just want to explain to you the difference in the chart you're about to see. The past two charts showed a specific grade level's performance year to year. Different students took the test in those years. So this is showing you grade four. The students in grade four who took the test in 14, 15, in 15, 16, and then in 15, 17. So with each bar, you're seeing a different group of students, but you're seeing an exam that measures more or less the same standards within ELA. Another way that we look at data in district is through something called a cohort analysis. And this can be helpful as well, because this actually allows us to pull data from multiple sources and look at a consistent group of students across time. So if you're looking here at, for example, the class of 2025, which is our current grade five, you can see their performance as third graders in that third column over in 15, 16, and then next to it, you can see their performance in fourth grade. And if you took the upper grades over time, you would start to see that each year you kind of add a graph, a line on that graph, and then you can see the same students over time. So here, something significant that I noticed is looking at this class of 2025, our current fifth graders. If you look at the number on the third graph across of the students exceeding expectations, that jump is so much more apparent than you might have noticed if you look at the data separately. So this is why cohort studies can be especially helpful. That actually went from 7% exceeding expectations when they were third graders to 20% exceeding expectations when they got to fourth grade. So again, these are different standards that are being measured in third and fourth grade, but it's really interesting to look at the same group of students over time and draw those conclusions as well. Grade five, now we're back to the more traditional setup, so we're looking at grade five over time. You'll see consistent trends here with the state. We're increasing the number of exceeding expectations and increasing the number of meeting expectations. Again, looking at the red section on the bottom for students who do not meet expectations, the PARC overall seven states is showing an increase there over the three years. Again, New Jersey is flat across, and Nutley is able to continue to decrease the number of students not meeting expectations.
Thank you, Janine. Looking at the data, you know, a couple things to point out. And it's really the blue to green, you know, the blue shift, the green shift, and the red shift that Janine's been talking about. And again, this is one indicator, one piece of data that we can use to make decisions as we go through looking at our program, looking at our students. But again, in sixth grade, at the Nutley side, you see an increase in blue, an increase in green, right? Which indicates that, you know, we're growing in fives and fours. Really, that's our goal, right, to grow in fives and fours. Exceeding expectations, proficient plus, as we sometimes talk about it. Please, Nutley, about 300 students, the sample size here. And when you look at the schools, Lincoln, Raglo, Spring Garden, Washington, Yacko, there is a significant difference in population, the number of population in each school. Some schools are very large, and we're small, and the student has a bigger impact in a smaller school. So you should consider that when looking at data as well. The same kind of study that we looked at comparing a class, this is the class of 2023, our current seventh graders, who made a transition to the middle school last year. This is interesting, as we look at Nutley's data, blue getting greater, green getting greater. Remember, the PARC assesses standards that are based on the age of the student, right? The progression of learning. So it is so interesting to compare these standards. It's also worth noting that for the state, when they go from fifth to sixth grade, you see a very consistent green line there. That's typically when students move buildings. Artists stay in the same building as they go from fifth to sixth grade, so we see a little growth there. ELA, grade seven, you see, again, a very similar. Here, you only see one squad living in their seventh grade language arts. A little different math when we get to that part. But you see continuous growth in blue and in green as well. So over 70% of our students are proficient plus when it comes to seventh grade language arts. In eighth grade, it's a little different with PARC, the New Jersey data. We are consistent with New Jersey, and you see just the increasing difficulty of all students in the PARC continuum as they move from seventh to eighth grade. Ninth grade, you see the move across the street. This is an area where we took a step back, right? You can see we remain consistent with the ones, maybe increased a little bit. Our blues and our greens, really, that green, the yellow line is of note at this point in ninth grade. In tenth grade, somewhat consistent, but again, a step back. In eleventh grade, actually, a slight step forward. In eleventh grade, in tenth grade, we also have to look at the amount of students we have taking the PARC assessment. The high school, how many students sit for that exam as opposed to not taking it? Or taken seriously. And that's another area of interest for us to talk about moving forward. Moving to the math side of things.
So we're in a really nice place with math this year because it's currently going through a program review. So that's a time when our Coordinator of Mathematics, Liam Martin, will be really taking a close look at the math program, meeting with teachers, looking at data, and making some decisions about any possible curriculum adjustments. So it's a really nice time to also take a look at this data and see where our kids are now, and then what areas we may need to pay close attention to in any curriculum revisions. So here, again, you'll see Nutley, the third column over. A slight decrease there in the number of students exceeding standards, but pretty relatively close there in the number of meeting and exceeding put together. And this, again, will be something that Liam can look at more closely. The PARC consortium actually also provides evidence statement analysis, where you can look specifically at something like grade three math, and it will drill down even further and tell you things like, were there errors made specifically in the area of measurement and data or fractions? So that may be something that you guys do to further when looking at this data with teachers. Grade four, you'll see Nutley, again, had a large jump last year and was able to maintain and even increase the number of students meeting expectations. And look at the jump on the top there in blue with the number of exceeding expectations in that third column over. That would be from last year, from, I'm sorry, 15, 16 to 16, 17, the number exceeding expectations, which is really remarkable. Again, when you look at the bottom in red, and you see PARC with a slight increase in 15, 16 not meeting standards, and then maybe a slight decrease from there. And the state, we're still far below that benchmark as far as students not meeting standards, which is a positive. Grade five, you'll see in 15, 16, you did see a jump again from 14, 15 in the number of students meeting standards. And we were able to maintain that this year, and actually alongside with that, on the bottom, reduce the number of students not meeting standards. Even when you look over at the PARC column, where you see the majority of students taking the PARC are actually increasing the number of students not meeting, and the state is still kind of flatlining on that, we're able to push that number down.
Sixth grade math in Nutley, we saw a decrease the previous year. This was an area of focus. This area turned into a increase for this year. We doubled our fives, and we grew our fours. So being in a couple of sixth grade math classes today, I can see why the teachers, the strategies they're using are bringing kids to significant learning. In class of 2023, if you look at the trend, you can also see that our program is growing as well. The students from grade four to grade five and grade six are growing in the fives, doubling each year, and growing in the greens as well. Of interesting note, the reds also grew up this past year. Grade seven math and grade eight math. And math starts a little different path as students move to the middle school. Some of our students place into algebra in seventh grade. In eighth grade, some students will place into algebra. Some students will place into geometry, different levels of that. So when you look at seventh grade math, you have to consider that 20 to 40 students are taken out and put into the algebra class in middle school. And those students will take the algebra PARC assessment, not the seventh grade math PARC assessment. So you see this trend, you see an increase and then a decrease in our seventh grade math program. This data is invaluable for Ms. Martin, she's going through her program review this year. Same thing in eighth grade. We're starting to see, the good news is an increase in the green, but we lose that small part of the fives. The reds pretty much stay similar as we move through. But the green is much larger than both the state and the PARC continuum, if you look at that. Algebra one, you have two schools here. You have Nutley High School, you have John O'Farrell Middle School. And remember, the students take algebra in seventh and eighth grade at the middle school, as well as in the high school. You see the trend, and you look at Nutley versus New Jersey and the PARC continuum. We would like to see more blues, we'd like to see green more. This will become an area of focus for us as we go into next year, especially at the high school. This is a consistent data set for the majority of schools who make Algebra one an area of focus. Geometry is the same kind of data sets. You see geometry being given in the middle school, as well as in the high school. And you see students have taken to the middle school, mostly all great. 95% will be fours or fives in the middle school, all last year. And then you see a constant trend, a little decrease in this geometry high school. Algebra two, very similar trend, only the high school data. You see blues coming in the first time for this year. And you see a real jump in greens. So although this data is, you know, the greens are only less than 30%, it is significant, the jump we made from 15, 16 to 16, 17, and more in line with state data coming in. Our science assessment, our science assessment is changing, by the way. As we move into this year, we're starting to get word from the state that they're looking at a comprehensive 11th grade assessment. That's not official, just sharing that. We're moving ask four to ask five, right, moving forward. Again, not official, but this shows you the ASK science, ASK eight science, as well as New Jersey BCT. I apologize, we cannot find the New Jersey state cut scores for this slide presentation. But very consistent with how we've done in the past, in all areas. SATs, the SATs went from three required sessions, sections, I'm sorry. The previous year to last year was two required and optional writing. So you'll see the data being presented, 13, 14, 15, 16, verbal, math, writing. You'll see a change into the verbal and math for 2017. You'll see the National Merit Scholars at the bottom, from five to three to two. And you see the SAT two D two mean scores that are there for the subject area SAT two tests. Those are out of 800 as well. So all these numbers are out of 800 on these different assessments. You can see the national, and we are slightly above the national. ACT data, ACT is a test that is more content-driven. They have subject areas for science and history, and it's becoming more and more appealing to our students, more and more appealing to colleges. Most colleges will accept an SAT or ACT score. And you can see the national average, Nutley out of New Jersey out of national average. We're on the increase, slightly lower than New Jersey, slightly higher than the national average. The AP data, past five years, 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17, you have the blue in Nutley High School. You have the green being New Jersey, and the yellow being global data. Students take this around the world. And you see Nutley's data peaked 77, 75, 81, right? You see we're down to 70, right? New Jersey, slightly lower than New Jersey, so about 10 percentage points higher than the global average. This is something we're looking to make an area of focus as well. We'll talk about that very shortly. So the next steps are taking, metrics are reporting, and developing a couple areas of focus. Things that the data tells us we should look at, we should study, we should get more data sets, we should get more surveys, more information, and go about making a plan of action in the red there. We're constantly analyzing the information coming in, and we have developed several areas of focus moving forward through the next cycle. The one I just mentioned, AP data. We are, we hope to have some ideas to the Academic Committee for the next cycle in November, addressing this through program studies and aligning expectations in our AP classes. That's being talked about already. For algebra, Algebra one is another area of focus. And for that area of focus, we're looking to identify at-need students in November and put them through a targeted instructional program at the high school starting in January. Something which we haven't done since the days of the HESPA years ago. So we're looking to use Title I funding, identify, and with our new schedule, use common time to give them more targeted instruction as they prepare for the PARC this year.
Some other next steps that we're working towards have to do with our curriculum renewal process. So right now, English Language Arts is in the implementation, first year of a new curriculum. So we'll be looking at the impact that that has. We'll be referencing that with this data and seeing if the gaps that we identified in some of this data are matched to the new curriculum. And it's in the pilot year right now, so that curriculum can still be adjusted for next year if we feel like there's things we need to tweak in there. Also, with math being in program review, this is an opportunity, K-12, really, to look at the math program, and this data is going to help inform that process. Specifically on the elementary level, we are also introducing this year a new strategies early intervention program for students who have difficulty with reading. It's called Level Literacy Intervention, also referred to as LLI. And we're hoping that that's going to bring our youngest readers, primarily in grades one and two, up to grade level, so that we'll start to see, as it's implemented, an increase in students meeting or exceeding grade level standards within ELA as well. We just wanted to walk you through very quickly the PARC scores, as well as the other assessment data scores listed that we've gone over today are going to be mailed home shortly. You should be expecting them in the coming days. I know this is hard to read, but we did want to show you examples of the parent score reports. They're similar to what's been distributed in the past. If you look over to the left in that purple box, you'll see a performance level for your child. And then within that, you'll see a specific student score and where it falls within the five levels underneath. The score report also gives you specific information for both ELA and math to drill down a little bit further. Here specifically for ELA, it talks about literary text, informational text, so that you have an idea of your child's strengths and maybe areas that they need, they may need additional support in. We also encourage you to go to understand the score. There's a link in this presentation, which will be posted on our website. But it's put out by PARC. It walks you through, if you select New Jersey, it'll give you information specific to our state. And it walks you through information that you know about the PARC. It walks you through teacher interviews, where teachers show you PARC reports and talk about important features of the report. So that's a great resource if you want to learn more about the PARC data.
So we thank you for your time in getting this out. We will post all this information online, and the student reports will be going home tomorrow to all families in Nutley. Thank you very much.
Mr. Vania, Mrs. Locensolo, thank you so much. You guys do a wonderful job here. We're really honored to have you here. I had a quick question.
Absolutely.
And I'm going to open it up to the rest of the board members too, if they have anything that you'd like to ask. My only question is, and I always tend to want to see how we match up against other districts. Do we have the information or access to information to see how we may pair up against Verona or Milburn?
The way we would get that is we would have to go on their websites, because most districts post their data and compare exactly how we can reverse that. And I've been on several district websites, mostly to see how they're presenting data and make sure we're consistent with how we present it to our community. And I haven't seen much out yet for this year. But I would imagine after a month of October, we can start doing that as well.
Okay, perfect.
They're moving away from factor groups that used to be in place, where they would, you know, take certain districts that were comparable to you, and so you compare it to your district factor in your state. They're moving away from that. So it would be more like work as far as just looking at individual district data and compiling it?
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions?
Sure, absolutely.
So I was excited to see what we did in seventh grade math. Is that, this is about our third or fourth year, right, with the new math where we had that hard hit?
Right.
Is that why we're seeing the numbers there? Because if you see the algebra numbers and everything in the middle school compared to the high school, it was up. That's about the class that started in the middle school, I mean, the new math program, right?
Right, so when you start interpreting some of the data, you definitely have to, especially in ELA as well as math, is pay attention to different programs just from three or four years ago. It takes three, four, five years to start seeing significant changes in data, because the momentum builds, it starts building on itself. We're looking to utilize that, because the math and focus program utilizes algebraic type thinking to harness, you know, focus our attention towards algebra. We're hoping that that investment in the program pays off soon, you know, to that data set. But Algebra one is something, you know, when we talk to our colleagues about, you know, different data sets, that's something that many districts talk about, the data set. It's a rigorous test, and, you know, it's something we talk about all the time.
That's great, what you said, looks like the math, you know, we had those couple complaints, in a couple of years there, we're going to...
Answer your question, you can definitely see the program's impact on some of the data sets coming in. But that's just one measure, right? Multiple measures of data we have to consider.
Thanks.
Our current third grade two is the first cohort that's had an active focus from kindergarten up. So it'll be interesting to see as they progress that cohort in mathematics, to see if it's on a different trajectory than previous.
Yeah, that's what I said, because the first one in seventh grade, they had it three years ago.
That's right, yeah.
Any other board members wish to comment or any questions? Thank you. All right. So we're going to rerun the agenda a little bit here. We're going to save the New Jersey School Board Association podcast for a little bit later on. We're going to move down to the Board Secretary's report. This is Karen Unis.
Good evening. Few updates on some of the projects going on throughout the district. The Washington School Security Entrance Project. We had an excellent pre-construction meeting with the architects, administration, and the contractor to develop a plan for how the project is going to proceed. Items that need to be addressed within the building, and where equipment was reconstructed, parking. We got down to times that they would be able to get to the building, and what days the district is closed, so they could move forward on getting a lot more work done. So they are going to start on November 7th, and then they will come back on the 9th and 10th, which are all days that the school is closed, you know, students in the building, and be able to get some of the louder noise out of the way. There will be bi-weekly construction meetings throughout the project timeline with all of those same individuals, and we will provide updates to the parents through the principal, Mr. Jones, and here at the board meetings. Our final inspection for the Nutley High School Security Entrance is scheduled for tomorrow afternoon. And we finally reached the end of the line.
I think you're real clever.
I don't know. I was waiting for you. After that, we should get our certificate of occupancy. If you've driven by the high school along New Street, you've seen the work that our grounds crew did last Friday. They laid all the sod, as well as planted shrubbery around the entrance. And the only thing left is to have the sod erected, which this evening, we are approving a resolution to have the contractor do that. We took the work away from the current contractor because we wanted to make sure that it got done in a timely fashion. But I'd like to extend a special thank to a member of our grounds crew, Mr. Nick Raymond, who designed the shrubbery and the area, and to the rest of the crew for all of their hard work, because it looks great. On tonight's agenda, there are a couple of resolutions that I'd like to point out. We are approving our annual comprehensive maintenance plan. This plan lays out all of the maintenance and facility projects that are done throughout the district in any given year. So you see what is actually done in last year, what's projected to be done this year. So you see what is actually done in last year, what's projected to be done this year, and then what we anticipate we will be doing in the following year. The numbers include the salaries for our in-house maintenance crew, as well as all the supplies and any contracted services that we do. So last year, we spent about $987,000 throughout all of our facilities. This year, we anticipate just over a million, as well as for 18 and 19. Some of these projects included lighting upgrades, the weight room upgrade at the high school, new lockers, all the water lead testing that took place throughout the entire district, improvements in sidewalks, parking lots, and a lot of other routine inspections. It also includes the annual upgrade to all of our wooden floors throughout the gyms and auditoriums. So there's a lot that is done each and every year, and this report then has to be sent to the Department of Education. There is also a resolution on the finance section for food service contracts. So the Department of Agriculture had an audit done by the federal government, and they also went in and audited a few school districts with respect to how food service management contracts are procured and how food service management in general is handled. And the recommendation from the government was for the state to go to what is called a fixed-price contract, rather than what we currently use, which is cost reimbursement. Under the cost reimbursement, a food service management company quotes a price per meal when they do a contract to a school district. This gives the school district a lot more flexibility. So for instance, if we determined anytime throughout this school here, or the life of the contract, that because of an increase in enrollment, we needed to have an additional person from the food service management company to help serve lunch, we would be able to just tell the food service company that's what we wanted and get it done. Under a fixed-price contract, you don't have that flexibility any longer. You have to then issue a brand-new RFP. So anytime you have a change, you would have to do this process, which means you could conceivably have to do a new RFP every single year. It also can affect ultimately the quality of the food that is being served. So this resolution this evening is one where we, as a district, are saying we would like the option of being able to do either type of contract, so that we're doing what is servicing our students and what is in the best interest of the students and our program. And this resolution will be forwarded to the Department of Agriculture, to New Jersey School Boards, and some other entities within the state in support of this option. There are about 100 districts that have already submitted this resolution, so we're hoping to get some sort of a reprieve and to have this option available. And I did recently get a text, because I had some questions from the board. The center railing for the steps outside of Lincoln School is to be installed tomorrow, and then the side railings should be installed within about two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vany. Okay, so we're going to move over to our student representative, Mr. Tao Chen.
Hello, guys. Good evening. Right. Good evening, everyone. Over the past month, a couple Nutley High School events took place. First, there was the farmer's market on October 1st, where student council saw apparel and students met with community members. And then we have the October 13th and October 14th Homecoming weekend. The dance took place on Friday, and we crowned the Homecoming camp, we have each grade level at a time. And on Saturday, which is the next day, following the dance, we had the alumni breakfast. The student council helped out. There was a parade, and there was barbecue. The two events went well and was successful. Everybody had a great time. This was actually the first time that I've ever been to the Homecoming. I have to say that I really enjoyed it, and the burgers are really good. So kudos to the caller crew. And for the upcoming events, November 19th, we have the Power Pub coming up, and we'll be hosting our first event of decathlon in December. In the meantime, students are ordering decathlons right now. And next week, the NHS Performing Arts will present a fall play, The Crucible, by Arthur Miller, from November 3rd, which is a Friday, to Sunday, November 5th. So come and support it. It's a classic show, so I love it, and I'm sure I love you a little too. And we end, October was a full month, and I'm looking forward to November. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Okay, so we're going to move over to our committee reports. We're going to start with Lisa Van Chek Martin with our academic report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The academic committee met on October 18th. Ms. Locensolo and Mr. Vany reviewed the data presentation that was given here tonight. Additionally, we learned that Nutley will be doing a PARC field test in English Language Arts this year, as well as the PISA, which is the program for international student assessment, a worldwide study of 15-year-old pupils' scholastic performance on mathematics, science, and reading. Ms. Locensolo also gave an update on the progress of the gifted and talented program since last year's performance review. There are now defined entry and exit criteria, including the COBAT exam given to all third and fifth grade students. This is a reasoning test and is one of multiple measures used for the selection of gifted and talented. Dr. Glazer detailed the work the administration leadership team has done with Dr. LaVera, who was once again working with the district to develop the five-year strategic plan. Dr. Glazer also shared the proposed revised job description for the director of technology position. The committee had a general discussion about communication dissemination for the upcoming referendum. Additionally, the committee also had a general discussion regarding ongoing facilities projects at the high school, Lincoln, and Washington schools. Mr. Vany reviewed field trips and professional development requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Chek Martin. We are going to move over to administration. Mr. Schlerer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The administrative committee met October 16th at 4:30 in the board conference room. On that meeting, Mr. Nicoletti, the manager of buildings grounds, gave an update on facilities projects, answered specific questions regarding permitting, timelines, concerns, and issues affecting the completion of high school security entrance, and the steps to repairing Lincoln School. Both, you can see, were reported on, and both have been processed since our October 6th meeting. It's great news. Our Karen Greco, our communications director, met with the committee regarding the information for dissemination for the referendum, and that vote will take place December 12th, and the polls will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And Dr. Glazer reviewed the revised job description for the director of technology position. This position is posted internally. We have a number of applicants, and the interviews will be scheduled timely. The position is available on November 1st. The committee discussed the hockey co-op in effect with the South Orange Mayborn School District, and clarified communications to the families in both districts. And Dr. Glazer also reviewed several legal personnel items. The next meeting, administrative committee, will take place Monday, November 13th at 4:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schlerer. We're going to go over to finance now. Mr. Southbrier.
Thank you, Mr. President. The finance committee met on October 17th. The committee received updates on the ongoing facility projects. The high school classroom door lock replacement automatically happened and complete. Just waiting for a new course to be installed in the locker rooms. The boot drive curb and sidewalk replacement project is complete. The committee requested that the area near the gates and aisle be looked at for potential paving needs next year. The Lincoln School steps were discussed. Thank you, Mrs. Vany, for the update. The floor replacement and painting of the child study team offices was completed, and the staff has been moved back in. We discussed the pre-construction meeting that took place at Washington School. The contractor anticipates starting the first week in November, and Mr. Jones will provide regular updates to all parents. The committee also discussed the options for repairing the trim around the middle school, and a few upcoming projects such as the high school girl locker room upgrades and the bathrooms outside the auditorium. We also discussed repaving the parking area on the grounds warehouse located on Memphis Street. The committee reviewed the preventive maintenance plan that's being discussed tonight, and the October 30th finance resolutions were reviewed with the committee. And the committee also discussed the hockey co-op, the extended day financial report for September, and the water re-sampling that will take place in November. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 20th.
Thank you, Mrs. Southbrier. One more committee, policy committee, with Ms. Sherman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The policy committee met on October 18th. Dr. Dilly Glazer, Ken Vany, Janine Locensolo, Lisa Van Chek, and Martin, and Fred Schlerer. Fred reviewed the policies prior to the meeting. He's out of town the day of the meeting. We reviewed policies for content relevance and considered recommendations from administrators, which are on the agenda for the first reading tonight. We also verified that the policies being presented tonight are up to date and compliant with NJD28 NJAC requirements as provided by Strauss Esme. We discussed the next section of policies to be reviewed by the committee and administrators for our next meeting. We reviewed policy alerts received by Strauss Esme. We discussed potential policies to be drafted to address issues specific to our school district. We also discussed possible future presentation on policy review and implementation for the public at a future board meeting. Our next meeting is November 15th.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. All right, so I was trying to hold off on this presentation, but we are now at the point where we are going to let this roll. We do have a presentation out here for New Jersey School Boards Association. It is a podcast, and I will let the audience know that it is audio only, so there's not going to be too much pretty stuff going on on the screen, but I thought it was, we as a board thought it was important for the public to understand, this podcast is part of the process for the referendum on the do's and don'ts of board members. So I thought it was important that we do it publicly and give everybody an opportunity to understand it and us as a board to be able to accommodate. Good morning, and welcome to NJFBA's podcast program, School Law Today. The program discusses school law issues with the school board attorneys throughout the state. Today's guest is Jonathan Bush, and I'll introduce him formally later. And we'll be talking about the navigating the referendum process from his perspective and his background. Jonathan's been, is the partner of Jonathan Bush Law Group. So welcome, Jonathan.
Thank you. Thanks, Fred. I appreciate you having me.
Just tell us a little bit about how long you've been in school law and a little bit about your firm before we get started on the referendum process.
Absolutely, so I've been practicing school law for most of my legal career. It's pretty great to be able to practice law, but do so within the constraints of the schools. You know, if you have any interest in education, the idea of doing, you know, school law is really, you know, it's really the perfect job, in my opinion.
Okay, yeah, the firm, yeah, sure. Yeah, sure.
So the firm, the firm was founded in 2014. Couple guys and I started the Bush Law Group, and we started with, you know, one, seven clients in one county, we're up to 19 now in 10 counties. We're smart, this is, you know, High Point Regional, up in Sussex County, it's smart south, it's a commercial township down in Cumberland County. So we're really far and wide across the state of New Jersey. We're doing some really interesting work with school boards in urban, suburban, you know, areas. And fascinating to see the way that these issues play out in various communities. Of course, the issue that we're talking about today is referenda, and how boards respond to referenda, and what school districts can do to keep themselves out of trouble, if you will.
Okay, before we get to the role of the board once they decide to do that, and they don't come to the decision of doing a bond referendum lightly, it's usually something that's decided over the course of many discussions. Is there any advice you would give to a school board or school district before they make a decision, from your perspective?
So it's a great question. Typically speaking, school districts rely on both their general counsel and their bond counsel for handling referenda, referendum projects. You know, the bond counsel really helps a school district put together a plan that is feasible. Typically, it would work if it's a capital project, for example, as most of these are, you would work with your local architect, and you also, you know, put together engineers, and you put together a plan. That front-end work, like you referred to earlier, can be time-consuming and process-oriented. But once you have presented a plan, the general counsel is really important to consult with, because you need to be able to get a sense from them as to what you can and what you shouldn't do, because there really are a lot of rules that come into play and a lot of concerns under certain circumstances that may jeopardize a board's interest.
Yeah, now, the board has decided through a vote that they want to place this on the ballot. That action in and of itself kind of shows a support for the project. You want to put that on there if you aren't supporting the project. But during the education of the voters, they kind of, this goes back to when we had a lot of ballots, and when we had to pass the budgets a lot, they had to remain neutral. And what does neutral mean in educating the voters?
Well, before getting into that, let me just say, in your question, I have confronted and seen board members who may be opposed to their own referendum. So it's interesting, because like you said, the board is voting on a question, but there isn't supposed to be. And again, it may fly in the face of all that is practical, at least in most places, but in more unconventional circumstances, there are board members who oppose a referendum. Typically, they wouldn't put on the ballot, but there could be a situation where a ballot question is presented, and, you know, there's some controversy associated with it. So what we, what we suggest oftentimes is, you know, is keeping the language neutral. You ask what does neutral mean? You know, don't take a position. The theory and the law behind it is that if the board is funding an election, it shouldn't be taking a position on the election. So some people listen to this and say, well, how the heck can we not take a position on something that we're presenting? Well, informational campaigns. Informational campaigns where you describe the amount of money that's going to be proposed, what the project means, the impact it would have on the district. Sometimes we're walking a fine line, but basically speaking, so long as you're not specifically asking people to vote yes, or in some cases, rare, but in some cases, vote no, then you've done your job. You've remained neutral.
Just a piece of advice we usually give is, you try to get, hopefully, the referendum, if you really believe in it, you have all the board members on board, but you don't want to try to probably go into a referendum with a four-three vote, because I think that would be a difficult message for your community. Just a...
Agreed. And the, yeah, well, real quick, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but it is a very complicated political process, and each community is so different, right? And we see that across the state and the districts we represent. You know, although we are lawyers and we give legal advice, you sometimes observe the politics that occur in some places. In some communities, the boards are really their own units, separate. In other communities, the boards are more tied to the township, municipal, I should say, dynamic. And so those factors all play into, at the end of the day, whether or not a referendum passes.
Now, when you say the board member, let's get into what the board members and boards can do, but this is tied particularly for the board, is that they cannot be expending, this neutral campaign is because they're expending district resources. Is that...
Finish this part. Yeah, let, yeah, let's be, let's be really clear. Just because the Board of Education, and I say Board of Education, I'm speaking of the legal entity of a Board of Education, just because a Board of Education can't publicly, as the Board Act, take a position on a referendum, does not mean that board members individually may not take a position. In fact, board members often do effectively, and are some of the best advocates, you know, for passage of a referendum. And so, one of the, one of the things that, that we have seen is that board members ask questions like, what can I do? What, what am I able to, to participate in as a means of helping a referendum pass? You know, because the first thought they have, that their hands are tied. Their hands are not tied, right? I mean, they, they, they can't speak from the microphone and encourage, as a, encourage a, a yes vote in their capacity as a board member during official time, like you said, using district resources. But they, they can speak and say that they're personally for the referendum. They can even probably do so from a microphone at a board meeting, so long as they say it's their own opinion and not the opinion necessarily of, of the board. You know, we, we've said and told board members they can put up lawn signs, for example, assuming that there are lawn signs in a particular campaign, which we've seen, you know, a vote yes sign, right? Vote no sign. They can distribute pamphlets, you know, they can go door-to-door. They have that First Amendment right to do that, just because they're a member of the board does not strip them of that right. They can, although there's been no case law on this, they, they can donate to a, a campaign. And, and I'll talk to you about that maybe a little later, but some districts have chosen to form what are called political committees. Not, not PACs, but political committees, or similar to, similar to candidate committees in the context of New Jersey's Election Law Enforcement Commission, where you create a candidate committee for the purpose of running for office. Groups of people in a particular community can form a political committee for the purpose of supporting or opposing a, a, a referendum question. So, the, you know, those, that's how you often end up with the yes or no sign. You have a political committee and a paid-for line at the bottom of the sign, just like you would if you were running your own campaign for public office. They can donate funds to that. Letters to the editor, you know, in certain communities, and not just letters to the editor, it could be, you know, letters to, or posts on a blog. In some communities, there are, there are particular, you know, media entities that are highly effective, and a local blog where people, that people read frequently, or, look, let's take it to social media. Social media posts, websites that, you know, relate to particular communities. You can post on all of those. Those are just like letters to the editor in the more traditional and print context. But you have to say that your writing is, is you individually, and that it's from you individually, and that you're not speaking as a member of the board. And that relates to a, to an older school ethics decision with respect to letters to the editor.
Right, and before we get on to my next question, if anyone has a question, they can type it in the chat room. You can log into the chat room. You just have to register with Blog Talk Radio. Or you can call, uh, one, three, four, seven, nine, eight, nine, eight, nine, oh, four.
Hi, everybody. I made it. Um, so what you were hearing so far, you heard about the first ten minutes of the podcast that I think Mr. Carnesal already introduced from the New Jersey School Boards Association. There is still quite a bit left to go. We're going to continue with our part of the meeting, and then we will play the rest of it at the end for anybody that's interested in hearing the, the last few minutes. I think that it's critical, if you were listening, to know that while the board will not speak from the microphone as the board, I, I can, and they are all still individuals and still taxpayers in town, and can continue to talk about the referendum and what's coming December 12th. So if you have questions about what you've heard, please ask. And again, if you're interested, stay in the ads and we'll, we'll play the, the rest of the program for you. We're also happy to give you the link if you're interested and, and just replay those thirty minutes over there for your sleepy enjoyment, your sleepy enjoyment. So, hi. I'm glad to be back. It actually went smoother than I thought this out of there. Hopefully, before I came back, Mr. Carnesal acknowledged the efforts of Kent and Janine and Persis, the principals and coordinators for not only reviewing the various sources of data that the district receives, but for using the specific data points to inform our district curriculum instruction and in-house assessments, and to help us to personalize instruction for each of our students. As I'm sure you heard from, at least from them, if not from the board members, but I'm going to repeat it anyway, these efforts have resulted in the district's continued momentum. And while there's always still work to do, every teacher from pre-K to 12, and since there's so many of you here tonight, I want to make sure that I say this, should be incredibly proud of the role that they've played in preparing our students for academic success. Parents, you're going to be receiving individual student reports detailing the results of the assessments in the mail. And again, if you have any questions, please contact your child's teacher, first of all, or the school principal. There have been a lot of things happening since our last board meeting. I'm not even sure where to begin. I'm not sure what you covered, so if I touch on a couple of things, just jump in and say you already got it. You can just, just give me the high sign. The board and administrative team attended the annual school, school board convention. All of us attended sessions on everything from school law to developing policies and contract negotiations, to Chapter 78 healthcare, legislation, ethics, budgeting. It was a very productive few days. We got to see pictures of our students being fitted for the new band uniforms. I'm pretty excited about that. Disappointed that they won't be ready for the Gator Bowl, but it was exciting to see what's coming down the pipe. And while I was gone yesterday, I did get a picture of the students at the UN collaborating with the artists on the, the big sidewalk piece. That was amazing. I loved seeing that. I can't wait to see more pictures. And of course, I'm sure you covered, that's right, the performances of the Crucible this weekend. Tickets are on sale. Make sure you go. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. As I'm hopeful everyone knows, next Tuesday, November 7th, is Election Day. There is no school for students, but it is a full day of professional learning for our staff. They're going to be engaged in a variety of sessions, including Performance Matters in Unify, to look at student data, to help them inform that instruction. Many of our principals, coordinators, and teacher leaders submitted proposals designing the learning for the day. And Kent and Janine have developed, of course, catalog of opportunities for staff to choose from. To me, it's really exciting that so many people are ready, willing, and able to share their interests and expertise with their colleagues. And I think everybody's really looking forward to the day. I hope you are. I think it's going to be nice to have that choice again. On Election Day, you'll also see the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Act on the ballot for a vote. This is from the state. The proceeds of that bond sale are going to be used to provide grants for public libraries for construction projects, such as repairs, renovations. That's open to libraries all over the state. The state is going to repay those bonds at their own low interest rate over thirty-five years. And those construction bonds are repaid by the state. Again, they're not paid through local property taxes at all. This could be really important for our local Nutley Public Library, and therefore, I'm asking you to please consider voting when you go to vote to support the board. Also, on the ballot, November 7th, is the school board election. We have three incumbents, Lisa, Dancheck, Martin, Sal Ferrera, Fred Sclera on the ballot. They have been an integral part of the work of this district. They've been the drivers, not only of our strategic planning process, but incredibly vocal, ensuring that the Nutley Public Schools continue to move ahead with innovative, creative instruction and strategies for all of our students, whether they're general education students, special education students, college or career-bound, doesn't matter. They've been committed to providing opportunities to enhance our students' instruction. And please, no, I tell you this every meeting, this work is really, really hard. They don't just show up once a month for the Board of Education meetings. There are committee meetings, and PTO meetings, and liaison meetings, and negotiations, and endless stream of events. And if you're at those events too, you know that they're almost at every single one. All of these takes, all the tricky trades, all the fundraisers, those are all at their own expense. And that's them supporting not just the school district, but this town. And I'm going to tell you that that support is unconditional. I hope that you feel that it's unconditional too. As we made the decision to go out for a referendum, I've heard over and over again, how can we trust this board? How can we trust these people? I, I'm going to say to you, I wasn't here for the previous referendums, and, and I haven't met all the people who served during that time, or the people who made the decisions in question, but I can tell you the people of this board, inclusive of the three incumbents that are on the ballot for election, continue to learn, and research, and ask questions, and plan for the future, and fight for this process to be open and transparent. And there is absolutely no question in my mind that this team of people collectively, the entire board, has worked hard at being a team, and including having respect for each other's right to agree to disagree. Believe me, that happens a lot. And that they're a guiding force in the school district's success. So I encourage you to, number one, go to the polls and vote, period. Just please vote, exercise your right to do that on November 7th. And I would say also to please consider supporting the due diligence of those who have served and those who continue to be willing to serve our students in this town. And since I brought up the referendum, and I'm on a roll, and changed the whole meeting to let me talk, I was going to say, just turn off that microphone. I do want to address, I, I've been gone, so I've only had God on me now. I had some time on my planes to read and listen. And, and I have to say, I think that we do need to address some of the semantics and soundbites that have been passed around town. Regardless of what we hear, they don't change the facts that there's a critical need for our referendum. Whether my assertion that there is no Plan B if the community does not vote on a bond, and that things will remain business as usual, which is, again, continued trailers, the addition of more trailers, large class size, students not attending their home schools, and academics and programs suffering. Or Commissioner Evans' response to a specific question on the Davis property, saying that trailers are Plan B, the message is exactly the same. Our schools are at capacity. We are out of space. We have no places. We're out of instructional space to educate Nutley's students to the best of our ability, and the situation just continues to worsen each year. Additionally, despite answering this question repeatedly, there's still misinformation. Although the board was not able to schedule the referendum at the time of the general election next week, and there is a cost associated with the additional election, it's not an additional cost to the amount of the bond. It's not an additional cost assessed to the taxpayer. The costs are paid from the district-approved budget. I encourage everyone to please, please, please receive accurate information from the district website, from the district's social media pages, to ask your questions of any one of us you just heard. The school board said we can answer you. Ask your questions on the district page. Ask the questions on our social media site. We are happy to answer any question posed to us on our sites. I think all of us are glad for a healthy discussion. It's an important issue. All of the issues are important. But I do think that it's important to have the facts when we're discussing, and not to be just diverted by extraneous chatter. And, you know, that's a strategy too, but not one I'm willing to, to sit by and let happen quite moving on. Mr. Lee, you've been sitting for us for a long time. Sorry, sorry. My flight doesn't even delay by weather. I think you all know Andrew. If you're a student, I think you've come to love his voice on the school closing messages. That's his voice. So it's with sadness that we wish Andrew a fond farewell and much success as he moves to his new role as the Director of Technology in the very much closer-to-home district of Princeton. Andrew has added so much value during his four years in the district. He brought us our student information systems and our analytical systems. He's worked to submit accurate data, and just getting the data submitted at all sometimes to the state for our federal grants. He is the person that brought us the rolling out of our one-to-one Chromebook initiative that happened seamlessly. Just beyond that, you know Andrew, he's a person of easy disposition and good humor. And I really appreciated your help transitioning to Nutley and trying to learn everything I need to know. I'm not there yet, so, I'll have your cell phone number, sorry. I think it's your last day, but never mind. We wish you, you know, we wish you only success in all of your future endeavors. You are really going to be missed. Don't be a stranger, I promise. Come and give you hugs. Because tomorrow, I still have to keep going with the district. That's the saddest part. That's the saddest part. Well, you'll be here for this, and you'll like this. Tomorrow, we celebrate Halloween. Please note, lunch will not be served. Students will be dismissed at 12:30 PM. At the elementary level, sorry, guys. Students will have the option to return to school at the elementary level. At two o'clock in costume for a parade and party. I know you miss that desperately, but, you know, sorry, we had to move on. And finally, the district will be closed Thursday, November 9th, and Friday, November 10th for the NJEA Teachers Convention. We hope that you will also have a wonderful learning experience like we did in Atlantic City last week, and bring back lots of new ideas and lots of initiatives to the district. Thank you. Thanks for waiting.
Thank you, Dr. Blazer. Your messages are always so short and sweet.
I know. I've spent a whole month's worth of work.
We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation 601 allows twenty minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within these requirements. Speakers may speak more than once, only after the others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board, and sign with Ms. Kukuzo before you take your turn. For the first resolution to be heard, please step forward. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Dancheck, Martin, would you take that, that resolution?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move academic resolutions one through two as written.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Valzalma?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck, Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Coraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Sclera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesal?
Yes. Mrs. Sclera, would you take the administration, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like you, administrative resolutions one through six as written.
Discussion. Roll call, Ms. Kukuzo.
Mr. Valzalma?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck, Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Coraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Sclera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesal?
Yes. Mr. Coraro, would you take Finance, please?
Yes, Mr. Blazer. Our motion to move Finance Resolutions one through seventeen is written.
Discussion. Mr. Coraro, would you just recognize the donations on number eight?
Yes, Mr. President, we have a donation for $200 from Robert Watson to the Nutley High School, and a $1,500 donation from Frank Tobita for Hughes-Gopf to the Nutley High School.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Kukuzo.
Mr. Valzalma?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck, Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Coraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Sclera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesal?
Yes. Okay. We just put somebody on personnel, so I'm just calling her now. Mr. Klein? Oh, that's right, Ms. Russo. Who do you take personnel, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move Personnel Resolutions one through three as listed.
Okay, discussion. And before everyone jumps in, I just wanted to say a couple of words to Mr. Levine. I know we had a couple of candid opportunities to speak, and it's not great to see you leave. We wish you stuck around a little bit further. I know you've done a lot for the district over the years. You were here right before I came onto the board. And I know we've had a few tough conversations about the one-on-ones initiatives for computers, but we were able to manage it and get it together, and the district is better for it. And we really appreciate, and I really appreciate, the time that you spent here, and thank you. Anything else?
So, I have to say, so, we hired Andrew at the one position. I think it was about his second year, he was already in three other positions besides doing administrative work. He was teaching a class, he was stepping in, but he did many different projects for us here. He truly was a great employee of the district. We are going to miss him. Princeton's going to love him. A little five minutes from home compared to fifty minutes each way each day, I can understand that, but we wish him all the best, and we will go live up here and they'll be there.
Any further discussion? Anyone else would like to make comment?
Yeah. Yeah, Andrew, I want to thank you for all your efforts here and dedication to our district. I want to wish you the best in, in the future and I just want to thank you for your friendship.
Anyone else? Okay. Roll call, please, Mrs. Kukuzo.
Mr. Valsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Feraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scalera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kornstella?
Yes. Okay, in this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulation allows thirty minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes and we ask you to try to stay within these requirements. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene or relevant or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign in with Ms. Kukuzo before you take the microphone. First person wishing to be heard, please step forward. Okay, seeing none. Any old business to come before the board? Any new business? All right, I think we're going back to the legal podcast.
For those that want to-
And for anybody who's going to say-
Let's hug Andrew first. Let the people that want to leave go and then we can-